Post-secondary enrollment. So they just look at what this is. You notice this one's a year behind. This is 2023 data in terms of where students go and where they attend to attend, where they tend on attending. Yeah, so we had 58.4% go to a four-year college, 49.4 going to... Oh, I have to... I have to... Post-secondary education includes precolleges, colleges, universities, public-infinited two- and four-year institutions and institutions both inside and outside of Massachusetts. So for our district overall, any post-secondary was 58.4. Four-year schools was 49.4, and two-year schools was 9%. And we're a little below the state average in terms of students attending college after school, what the overall state average is like. We can look at district spending. So sort of like budget tonight. Finance and dollar spend, which we actually breaks down for us. So we do state and local funds with the average per pupil expenditure loss, which was $17,437 as compared, and $1,070 is what they consider to be federal funds. It goes pro-student, so they can obviously do an overall per pupil expenditure a little over $18,500, which is actually a little bit below the state average. Again, I haven't done... I don't say I haven't dug down into this one. I pulled up this data, I guess. So this is going to take you link to the school finance dashboard, which this is where we can start doing some deep data. So you can go through every single school district in Massachusetts and look at their in-district FTE, their out-of-district full-time students. And so you can look at enrollment. You can look at student demographics in terms of what's the total headcount, what's the low-income percentage, what's the ELL presented, what's the student disability? You can look at teacher salaries on average by every school district of Massachusetts. You can look at other types of support staff you have, MCAS scores. And then in the end, you can link this all to money and go back and say, okay, we can look at all these different factors, but then look at the average per pupil expenditures. And where... And then it actually breaks it down, where do you spend the money? You know, do you spend money on administrative costs, instructional leadership, teachers, other teaching services, professional development, materials and supplies, guidance counseling services, pupil services, operations and maintenance, or how much per pupil are you spending to support the programs, insurance, retirement of the programs, and then total expenditures. So like I said, this is... They have this data for every school district in Massachusetts. And you can select two and do a comparison if you wanted to. You can select the wall. Obviously, right now, how it's opened up, it's opened up to every district in Massachusetts. But on the side tab here, you could stay if you wanted to look at however prepared it is. You can follow cover of the... and just have those two school districts up there in that comparison. So ultimately, again, my theme here wasn't to necessarily go into depth as a presentation just to make sure members of the community are aware. There's tons of information out here. And you can go into this report card and go wherever you want to go in terms of finding out about the kind of public schools, from finances to demographics to academic opportunities, to how to prepare our students after high school, to how we're doing on the MCAS, if that's in the state and public schools. So that's all I have unless you want me to go into more detail into any specific area on the school district report card. Again, with the theme being tons of information available to the public to compare the kind of public schools to our regional partners and the state of Massachusetts.
So one thing that I think deserves a shout-out is our continued progress that we've been making in the number of days students are absent and our chronic absenteeism rates. I know that we've had presentations over this past year of some of the strategies that have been implemented in both buildings. And I just want to see if you could just mention that quickly because all our...
I just pulled up. So we went to this chronic absenteeism rate from last year, which we actually feel is doing better this year. So there's been a real focus in. You know, so obviously, you know, we talked only about it very early in 2022. And we, you know, we talked about this number a few times, how shocking that was. That at a district level, year through 12, 27.7% of our students were privately absent, meaning they missed more than 18 days of school. And it was the same as Massachusetts. We were exactly the same as Mass, right? And then we went down to 18.9, the state went to 22.2. We went to 11.4, the state only went down to 19.7. You know, so I think this is kudos to our administrative team, both at the middle high school and the elementary school. And we really put that focus on, look, for students to be successful in school, they need to be here. You know, this chronic absenteeism number is a real concern, and we're going to focus a lot of energy and work with families to encourage students to make sure we have a lock feeling that they're in school. And I think we're going to see this number continue to trend down. So attendance this year, obviously not reflected in this data. It will be next year when the report card comes out. We're seeing better attendance rates now, so I think we're going to see our chronic absenteeism continue to drop. I don't want to make a prediction about what that number is going to be. I do feel strongly that it's going to be under 11.4%. And, yeah, as you can see, we were at the same place after COVID as the state as a whole, but we made clear strides in that area.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that administration of both buildings got recognition for that. I know it's been a district focus, and a lot of districts are struggling with that. So thank you again for, you know, all of your efforts in bringing kids into the buildings.
Are we doing anything over on vacations?
We did not do this this year. So last year, this... Last year, it actually, Desi gave every school district a $10,000 grant to do an attendance recovery program. So we ran one at both the elementary school and middle high school last year. I can't... We did it all the vacations. I just don't know how many I had. Who did April, who did February? Someone did February, someone did April. Who did you do?
We did February.
You did February, I was with April. So we did do... We did do that last year. That was all funded with Desi. And that, they did not make that... Those ones available this year. So we did not run this little program for attendance recovery this year.
Thank you. Much if anyone has anything else. Thank you. So that brings us to the AP School Honor Roll Progress Report.
So the AP School Honor Roll Recognized Schools whose AP programs are delivering results for students while broadening access to AP exams. Schools can earn this recognition annually based upon criteria that reflect a commitment to increasing college-going culture, providing opportunities for students to earn college credit, and maximizing college readiness. There's four levels to the award: platinum, gold, silver, or bronze. We earned a designation of bronze. Overall, 32% of high schools in the United States are in some level of recognition. But that also, that means that, you know, 67% of high schools do not receive such recognition. So, you know, this recognition went to a third of the high schools within the country. So we were in that top third in terms of overall AP performance last year. This is a new thing that they started just a couple of years ago. So they've started this post-COVID, and I'm going to look at it a little bit more detail. So the first criteria is college culture, which I have up here on the screen. Let's get away with this a little bigger. So the first criteria is college culture. And to be eligible for the award, 40% or more of the graduating class had taken at least one AP exam during high school. So to qualify, you had to be at least 40%. And you can see, we were at 56%. So 50%... 56% of our graduating seniors last year took at least one AP course in high school. The second criteria is college credit. 25% or more of the graduating cohort scored three or higher on at least one exam. And this is where we just felt short of getting silver. You see, we reached the silver criteria for college culture, and we haven't been college optimization yet. We reached the silver criteria there as well. For college credit, we fell a little below the silver criteria, which was 30%. So we had 27% of our graduating cohort, graduating seniors last year, earned at least one score of three or higher. And they use the baseline of three or higher because that's the baseline for earning college credit. And I know we've talked about this before. That's been a shifting dynamic over the last 10 years, really. 10 years ago, if you scored a three or higher, most colleges were accepting those credits. It's much more into selective, individualized now. You know, so some schools... Generally, in Massachusetts, your state schools generally accept all your scores of three or higher. So if you're considering, you know, this is my sales official for AP courses. If you're considering going to a state college/university, and you take several AP courses in high school, and you get a three or higher on three or four of them, you get, in essence, eliminate... Get a chance to eliminate a college semester. And we have students who do that. We have students who come back and tell us, based on the AP schools... Basically, AP classes I've taken, I've been able to eliminate one semester of college. Some kids, as much as a year, if they've done some dual enrollment on their own or done some other work than at the state college/university level. I'll use my own... I use the example... I use my daughter as an example. Also, my daughter went to a school that was a science-based school. She's now a physician's assistant. And they did not accept that either for science APs. She had some trees on her, on her science APs. But they didn't accept them because they said, if you want to be in the medical profession, we want you to take our science courses. And they didn't accept any other credits. So it really is now kind of a school-by-school decision, where some of your private universities accepting less of these. And your state... Massachusetts state colleges and universities do definitely accept that three or higher. And so ultimately here, you know, this college board is basically still recognizing the importance of scoring a three or higher because ultimately it can earn you college credit. That's why the college criteria, college credit. That doesn't mean all 27% of our students who scored a three or higher actually earn college credit. It depends what school they went to and what that school does in terms of accepting AP courses. The last one is college optimization. Enter to qualify, 2% or more of the graduating cohort had to take five or more AP exams, and at least one of those exams being taken in ninth and 10th grade, so that you have a breadth of AP experiences. We had 7% of our graduating seniors last year take more than five AP courses and took one in 10th grade. We do offer AP courses to students in 10th grade. We could even offer any to ninth graders. And that's something that we consider that that is expanding. There are more and more schools that are making some AP courses available to ninth graders. Some do AP, seven-hour free action offer. Some do like an AP psych, though our students take AP psych in ninth grade. So those options are out there. And, you know, we had 7% of our students do this, which met the silver criteria. On some places, we're not that far from the gold criteria. And I think you'll see, you know, my comments behind it, next year we qualify. This is the first year we've qualified. They've only done it for a couple of years. But our AP scores, as we've demonstrated, as we talked about in fall, were better this year. We had some more students taking AP exams, their scores were a little better, scores were approved. And so this year, we met the criteria for the AP Honor Roll as a bronze school district. And I guess I'll see if anybody has any questions. We'll see what rating we get next year. I think it's a chance to get above bronze.
That's amazing. Congratulations to all of our students that are crushing their AP courses and all of our teachers who are doing an amazing job guiding them and teaching them along the way. It's quite an accomplishment. Anyone else? Okay, so thank you very much for sharing that. It's wonderful. Next, that brings us to the public hearing for the FY26 budget. Thank you. I know, do we need a plaque or a banner or anything? Is there any recognition?
I don't know if we get a banner. I don't know if we get a recognition beyond my email.
Saying congratulations?
Congratulations to our bronze school district with the membership criteria. So I haven't got any notification that we're getting something different.
Interesting.
Yeah, they should send something.
Yeah. The design is right there.
I'll follow up with the college board and see if we get anything besides the... I want to say that we received that notification.
Appreciate you, everyone. I know we spent the past few months talking about all things of budget. This hopefully should be one of the last presentations on FY26. Our hope today is to, again, walk you through any updates we've had on the budget, also do some high-level overview of all things revenue and expense. We'll cover that again. And then the end of the meeting, our festive committee, which is the committee with the vote for our warrant appropriation for FY26. So finish your presentation summary, we'll do revenue and expenses. We'll dive into some analysis. I'll sort of give you the highlights of where you've seen some change going into FY26. In all, in such case, about some of the next steps you've got to bring us from idea to function. As we talk about each time we do a presentation about money, I'd like to just take a moment to remind us of our priorities. As always, more to spend some time diving into the figures. Just to remind our community that the budget is more than just numbers and graphs. This is a representation of your investment in education in your community. And then ultimately, those numbers represent your staff and your kiddos and all the programs and the wonderful things we spent a few hours today celebrating. Those three bullets are some of our top priorities. The educational blueprint certainly, and those key priorities of the district. Obviously, maintaining level services for all of our students, which our budget does this year and then some. And then continuing to develop the pathway programs to continue to keep kiddos who are in Carver in Carver and to attract students and families to our community. So we'll start with our revenue. We talked a little bit about this the last couple of meetings, but this is your... So how revenue is structured in Carver, the 10,000-foot view. It's really built in two buckets, two sections. That first section is the warrant item that we're going to fully vote today. It's a formula, it's a local formula between Chapter 70 Money, that's the way the state decides how much money each community gets for education, along with local funding. And it's like your excise tax, and local receipts, and those sorts of things all get put together. And then the second part of that we'll spend some time on is grants and offsets. It's much smaller than the state, you know, local funding, obviously, but still just as important. And in the interest of transparency, we'd like to spend some time going through what those are and kind of give you a sense of what each of those different offsets represent when it comes to your overall budget. So this slide gives you an overview of all things revenue. And I think this is probably the most helpful slide to take a look at. That first top bucket are your annual offsets. Those are streams of revenue that come in typically every year. Most of them are from the federal and state government. But one that I want to underscore for you, circuit breaker. We talked about this one before, but I think this is an important highlight for FY26. If you remember last year, Carver and many school districts across the Commonwealth got really jammed up with significant increases in special education out-of-district costs. Tuition rates were really high, additional students were going out. And so what the state does already, not in response, but already has, is this portion of the appropriation, state appropriation called the call the circuit breaker affectionately. Essentially, the state says, hey, communities, you've covered some of these costs. $50,000 is implicitly saved. But after that $50,000, we're going to be able to cover a portion of those and reimburse you a year later. It's about 70% of the money after a year later. So that's why you see your circuit breaker fund go from, you know, just shy of a half million in '25 to the better part of $1 million in '26. That's some of those resources coming back from the state given our spike in special education out-of-district costs a year prior. So that helps us offset a lot of our substantial increases in special education out-of-district. And if you recall last year's conversations, we were trying to balance the budget. We had to reduce reductions in expenses. We had to float some one-time revenue to like balance this thing. Having that circuit breaker come in helps us ensure that we don't have to do that process again. So that's a huge relief for us. The other item that I'll bring your attention to here are your grants offsets. You've got a number of federal and state grants. The line shared, though, is Special Education IDEA Title I. Those are probably your two branches. We target about $8,000 a year. That varies from year to year. You'll see FY26 actually looking like it's down. That's just the actual appropriation for '25. Typically, we can build in a buffer and confidently say that every year you're going to get a little more money from the feds than you got the previous year. We're being a lot more cautious with our conversations when it comes to federal funding. So right now, we're just leveling funding the amount with the hope that that's where we stand. Pre-K tuition is just that. Carver charges for preschool tuitions to offset the overall cost of preschool program. It was just substantially more than that. But that brings a little bit of money to help offset tuition, teacher costs for preschool. Hey, that next box is your one-time funds. I sound like a broken record, I know I do. Our goal is to have nothing in that box. That's our... That should be our long-term financial goal. Again, certainly FY25 was a tough year for everybody. You can see the district used a better part of $400,000 in one-time funds just to balance the budget. We're down to less than 100, which that's an excellent step in the right direction. But I'm hopeful that this time next year, when we've got an FY27 column, you see these two again. The last box, sorry, bottom there, that you see that green circle around. That's your state local aid. Again, it's a local funding forum that I know we've spent a lot of time talking about. It gets you that number. That number is down about $42,000 from our last meeting. It's due really just to a higher... A higher-than-projected tuition assessment from Old Colony. We get a per-pupil assessment from Old Colony. Ultimately, we have 14 more students in Old Colony. I'll show you that in the next slide going into next year than we have this year. But all-in, you're at about 28% increase from FY25 to '26, which is higher than the typical. All-in, your revenue is up by about 5.1%. This is a bit of a drill-down. I don't know if you're able to kind of zoom in on our little corner of that to the green circle there. The way that it... And I'm sure you all know this one, give you the height and level of it. The way that assessments work for your regional vocational is that each community contributes a portion of the overall operating budget that's proportioned with their enrollment assumption. So as you can see, for Carver, our enrollment's about 14 kiddos from the previous year. You add that per pupil at about $16,400, $16,300 per pupil plus additional operating costs that everyone else encourages. And you can see that there are substantial variances from year to year of about 28%. Our expectation, I'm sure it's... We could talk to you more about this, is that that brings us back to our more typical enrollment levels. So FY25, our enrollment was down quite a bit. This will bring us back up to where we typically are somewhere around the 90%.
Historically, we've had between 90 and 100 students in Old Colony. Last year, it was 78, was actually the lowest it's been in the time I've been superintendent. So if we went back to last year's budget presentation, our Old Colony assessment was actually lower than the previous year because we were down students. But this year, the projections will almost be back up to the more traditional 92. But that seems like a big swing for us because we were kind of in a low point. So it makes that assessment...
Year to year.
Year to year seemed like a large increase. But if you actually look at the chart of time, it was a little dip. And now, so it's not as aggressive as it's been.
So that's the only real change in your revenue ultimately. Everything else is identical to what we've been reviewing over the past few meetings. I will give you some drill-down analysis if I can. These are a couple of highlight points that are helpful. You've seen that chart a bunch. That's really our enrollment over, gosh, the past almost 30 years here. Again, your takeaway is there are two fold. One, your enrollment trend is going down. That's typical for a lot of school districts and communities in Massachusetts. The number of school-aged children in the Commonwealth is decreasing in aggregate. Carver is no different. And as a reminder, Chapter 70, the way the state puts together how much money each community should get from state funding is driven by enrollment. The more kiddos you have, the more state aid you get. Again, you've probably read a lot about the Student Opportunity Act. That's what the state passed a few years ago that was intended to help fill the gap from when the state set its funding formula back in the 90s to today. And that mechanism is also driven by enrollment. So communities who have had flat or increased enrollment get more money in Chapter 70 and get that Student Opportunity Act boost. Unfortunately, Carver, as is, gosh, the better part of two-thirds of all communities in the Commonwealth, don't get access to all of that extra funding. We have this called community aid. The governor's budget had it at $75 per student. Statute totally leaves 30. So the government has had a more substantial investment, which is great than what's typical on the statute, but still not really the amount that you'd get if you had a moment as flat or a moment increasing access to the opportunity. So again, it's a helpful takeaway. The other takeaway to just keep in mind is that we typically... Carver has been a school choice community. Each year, typically in the spring, April, May, school committees around the Commonwealth get together, decide you want to be a school choice community. Carver typically says yes. And so those little orange caps that you see at each enrollment bar represents your school choice those. It's not huge, but it does help ameliorate that decrease in enrollment and therefore provide some of that annual funding for those offset the overall costs. The other bit of revenue analysis to remind the community of is this chart. Again, on that right-hand side, you see the blue line, which ultimately represents your state aid. That's Chapter 70. Over time, it does have a little bit of increase. That's typically due to minimum aid, right? That amount of money that the state appropriates each year for two-thirds of all the communities in the Commonwealth that don't have increasing enrollment. But because that number is relatively small, it means that an increasingly large proportion of your overall cost, your overall revenue to operate a school district lands on your local revenue streams. And if you did a chart like that, look at the 233 districts that have been made, it's going to look kind of similar. So that's a challenge the state and the community deserves to present with, thinking about how do we think about this long-term? What is the stable mechanism to support education, public school education here in the Commonwealth and a large majority of communities when local community revenue streams are stretched and stretched thin? Lastly, this is just a visual representation of the buckets of revenue that you have. That blue bucket is, you know, your local state aid combined. That brown portion of the bar that you see there is your annual offsets and your grants and those sorts of things. And that very green topper are your small but growingly... Slowly decreasing number of one-time funds to offset costs. So there's your global view of revenue. We'll spend a minute talking a little bit about expenses as well. This is just how the state requires us to organize all of your expenses. You see that, you know, 1,000 through 9,000, bottom, the buckets of resources that they ask us to set the accounting around. This just gives you the executive level summary of all of those buckets, right? So you can see FY25 to '26, and on that far right-hand side, you see the year-to-year change by percentage. Again, your revenue up 5.1%. Your expenses have been adjusted to match that. I'll talk a little about some of the changes that we're going to see from last meeting to this meeting to make up that difference for that Old Colony assessment. So your first bucket, if you will, of expenses is your thousand series. That's District 5. No major changes from last time. Less than a 2% increase overall cover things like legal and your contracts for district-wide staffing, those sorts of things. Your 2,000 series is your instructional funds. Again, you've got typical steps and lanes for instructional staff. It also does include the savings for retirements as well. And those are substantial going into FY26. Summer school programs, copiers, long-term subs, all that stuff in there. I will say at the very bottom, one of the last things we talked about in a previous meeting was this opportunity to invest in annual curriculum revision program, something Dr. Erickson has been working with hard on, did a great presentation a few meetings ago about it. That's the one... Because it's new and it's not maintaining a service, that's the one place we dropped back the investment going into FY26. So we reduced that by the better part of 60% from the original plan. So we talked about at the beginning, our priorities for maintain level. So we talked about at the beginning, our priorities are maintain level services. And so while we can get some incredible opportunity to continue investing in building and strengthening curriculum in the district, we're going to cut down the scale of that going into '26. With the hope that in future years, as funding improves, we'll be able to continue to contribute and grow that program. So not removed, but it is drastically reduced to compensate for that reduction in overall revenue. Your 3,000 series is called the Support Series, other services. Again, steps and lanes for folks like nurses in transportation includes in-house special education on the district cost, as well as homeless transportation. I know we've spent some time talking about that over the past few years. But I just want to underscore, the district's committed to trying to bring a lot of those transportation use in-house. It typically saves the taxpayers' money and it gives the district a little bit better handle in terms of control of the service. So we're not all the way there yet, but I feel confident. I feel really proud of the work that the transportation team has already done to try to bring some of those roots in, reduce some of those costs. Uh, 4,000 series is predominantly operations. Again, steps and lanes for custodians, electric and gas costs and those sorts of things. Operations has typically been relatively non-changing over the past several years. We're in around 1%. This year, that's sort of caught off with us. Time Materials is on the rise, and so you see a better part of about a half, 5.7% increase to just cover existing services. That's no additional programming to speak of there. The only additional expansion we have is just broadening our painting program. We typically do a painting program every summer at middle-high school. That just refreshes the space. We're going to expand it over to the elementary school. While we always talk about it as the new school, it's new, but it's not brand-new. And so we want to make sure we keep it looking brand-new. And by expanding some of that program, we'll be able to keep refreshing some of those spaces. Fixed costs aren't really interesting or exciting necessarily. Insurance and those sorts of things comes out of there. Not health insurance, bigger liability. Right now, it's at about 5%. The major savings you see is our Plymouth Carver Regional employees. So when Plymouth Carver deregulated, those employees who were retiring under Plymouth Carver Regional remain, and therefore, we are required to provide that insurance. Those insurance costs are to be bear. As time goes on, there are fewer and fewer of those retirees. This 9,000 series, I know we put a lot of time talking about, but this remains the place I think we have to do the most work from a financial perspective. 7.2% increase over year-to-year is better than it's been, but still really high. OSD is a portion, a section of the state is dedicated to organizing and figuring out how much some of these private schools can charge all of, you know, these school districts and communities. And so they set that this year at 3.7%. So that's just same exact service you get is going to be 3.7% more costly. So if our number was exactly 3.7% for going, that's just entirely the cost of operating. It's almost all that, so we still have work to do to try to find ways to bring those costs down. But again, much better than you were in FY '25. If you want to know the next one, I have just a quick drill-down on some of the expenses. This is your 10,000-foot view in special education. These are all-in special education costs over the past 10 years. Those blue bars are just the actual change in cost, right? What you can see is from year to year, they typically go up with the exception of, you know, 2017, 2019, obviously 19 with the pandemic, that's sort of an aberration, right? But 2017 was the year that Carver initiated a lot of new programming here in-house, brought some of our kiddos who were out of district back in. In that orange line, you see that's just a percent change. So again, while it follows along with the increase, that net increase, you can see going from FY '25 to '26, that sharp decline showing that while we are, yes, still increasing our costs, the rate of increase is slowing, and that's going in the right direction. This last slide gives you that executive view of your overall expenses. The better part of 90% of your total operating costs are direct student services. The remaining is things like operations, custodial staff, administration, benefits, those sorts of things. Uh, again, we talked a little about this. You know, your state student tuition remains at about 11% of your pie. Pre-pandemic, it was around 8. You may never get back to 8, but if you can get down to 10, 9, that's going to be a step in the right direction. So here's your, your snapshot of your budget from '25 to '26. All-in, your operating revenue is $27.7. Operating expenses match that, obviously. It still does require some of that one-time funds to balance it and to make sure that you've got enough resources to maintain all of your services. But it gives you a budget-neutral, balanced budget at $27,712,789. And on your final slide of that portion, the request of the committee would be to vote a warrant number of $25,403,268. If that was voted today, the meeting is in April, assuming that the legislature, the community would approve that, your budget would start July 1. I'll answer any questions that you have, sir.
Excellent presentation as always. Thank you so much for, um, the added notations. Everyone knows I'm an accountant by trade, so this is, this is my wheelhouse. But I greatly appreciate the way that you disseminate this information and explain it so that people that aren't in our profession can understand it. It's greatly appreciated. We're very fortunate that, um, we have you and that you have that special skill. Does anyone have any questions or any comments? Looks like Kelly's ready to make a motion.
Are we ready? Oh, boy, here we go. I move to approve a budget of $25,403,268 for the FY '26 school year.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you very much. I can quickly say, um, if everyone could prove a term town meeting in April, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
Um, so that brings us next to upcoming events. Come on, spring.
Wednesday, April vacation.
Boy, this list.
So right now, we are involved by the district review. That started today. So that passed, we go today through Thursday. Uh, they spent the day, members of the district, they spent the day at the middle-high school giving classes. I don't know the exact number of classes they saw, but they were almost seeing between 25 and 30 classes at middle-high school. And then they interviewed both the central office staff, myself, Dr. Erickson. It was very, the principal was pristine, and Ruby were interviewed at support services groups. Tomorrow is all the day they spend the day talking staff. And then Wednesday, they'll be spending the day visiting classes at the elementary school. Same goal of visiting 25 to 30 classes at the elementary school on Monday. And then Wednesday evening is the parent forum. So last I heard from them, I think they were asking around 12 parents had signed up for the parent forum. They hadn't, uh, she hadn't checked as of this afternoon, so that was the dumbest morning. We sent out information a week ago about that. Gina sent out a reminder last week. So that's still something that parents can sign up for. So if you're interested in participating in the parent forum, we could certainly even send out one more reminder tomorrow, Gina, to do a, we'll send out one more reminder tomorrow, the link for people to register for the forum. And those people who have registered, they're going to get a reminder from the group, yeah, from ARS, ARS who is running it. So they'll just send the reminder, say, hey, you registered for the forum. Come join us on Wednesday night. So that is still open to the community, and we encourage people to participate in the parent forum.
Absolutely.
So it's obviously the district review, something we're preparing for all year. And we'll be excited when we complete that process. And the goal is that they will have a report to us by the end of May. So maybe prior to your meeting, they actually do a review of the report. That's their goal, that's their timeline. Hopefully they need that. If they don't, then we'll look at that in August in terms of, you know, how we adhere to the DSS standards in those areas of curriculum instruction and student support.
Come last.
Besides that, I see just a lot of exciting things coming up. And some of those things I've already mentioned in terms of our, we have our upcoming tournament games listed on here, honor roll breakfasts, those types of things. And then March is always a long month. And March is good, there's no breaks in March. So there is a lot of stuff going on in March as well. So as always, you know, these, all these events are available on our district website, you know, official calendar. We encourage members of the district to come out and participate in all these different events that are occurring. So please come and join us and celebrate all the great things that are happening throughout this year.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent, financial update,
Well, it was really brief this time around. I know it's been a lot of time talking about the news out of Washington when it comes to federal funding. Let's just give you a quick update about some of the information that came out from the federal judge, which set a restraining order in place blocking the federal spending freeze. After that restraining order, there were still some funds that were being frozen. So this is sort of set the stage for some legal action. Everyone expects several legal challenges, as well as some follow-up guidance and additional executive orders. We've been trying to keep a close eye on a lot of the movement. Bottom line for Carver, none of our federal funds have currently been impacted. We'll keep you updated. In brighter news, the Mass Budget Policy Center, every year they do this really nice analysis of the state budget. They just included there. The only thing I would just say there, you know, Mr. Neef was showing you the financial information for DSS. One of the things I think Massachusetts should take a lot of pride in is we do a nice job being transparent broadly when it comes to public funding in everything, especially in education. So this is just a breakdown. They do annual analysis for us, not just in education, they do it across the board, everything in the budget. But they break down in terms that everyone can understand, and they do a nice, like, drill-down if you're really interested in transportation or special education. You're going to dig into that as well. No new grant awards for you, and I do have your warrants here for Order 3 in February. And just request the committee to vote them if you.
Do you have transfer that you wanted to announce?
Oh, yeah, I do have a transfer.
So you can go now, it's fine. It's a 50 second.
Whenever you want.
Wait, do the transfers, sorry. If you go to the transfers tab at the next step over this meeting. What you've got there is your budget, as always, to the penny. But this here is just your transfers at the bottom are the ones that matter the most to you. Give you a couple of highlights here. Your pay transfer there, $15,149.90 goes to Big Collaborative. It's for additional services for people there. In addition, we've got, you know, just shy of $15,000 special education, some ordinary hand services are required. You see those two 7,500s? Those are budget-neutral in that we realize that one of the things we can do better from our perspective in terms of providing, buying some transparency, because of better planning, is to build some copier-specific accounts. Again, had those before, and they were like buried in the budget and other expenses. So I broke those out, built new accounts. All we did there is transfer some money out of the materials and supplies to the buildings, put them in the copiers. I know that's not ribbon and stuff, but it just helps us better, like, understand what our costs are and try to keep those down if we can. $6,000 in addition for your end-of-year retirees. We're projecting higher-than-typical retirees going into FY '25, so that braces us for that impact. You've got some adaptive equipment and about $5,000 coming in for some disabled elementary students. We're replacing damaged projector over at the elementary school that was due to lightning strike. We're expecting some reimbursement from insurance. This covers the initial cost to get a projector operational, and then we'll reimburse the insurance. And then you, these little equipment for, you know, I'll answer any questions you've got of the budget transfers and request you vote to approve this and or, sorry.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions? Okay.
I move to approve the warrants as presented tonight.
All right, second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the FY '25 budget transfers as presented tonight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That brings us to food service rates for adults.
Yeah, so USDA Division of Food and Nutrition oversees the federal and by that extension, the state federal food services reimbursement program. You know, so we have reimbursable lunches for our students. Periodic nation guidance on how reimbursement should be calculated for schools. And ultimately, you know, even though we're funding student lunches, reimbursement doesn't fund adult lunches. So the reality is the cost of, you know, there's no increase in cost for food services, increase in cost of food, and we're looking to increase our cost for what we're charging adults who eat breakfast and their lunch. I don't know our number on breakfast. I assume it's really small. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not having many adults who are purchasing breakfast through our food service program. But we do have a good number of adults who purchase lunch through our food service program. They do actually, they do a great salad program, actually. There are a lot, a lot of the staff members take advantage of our first student salads. So, but ultimately, we have rising costs. And that gives you reimbursed food services, getting the faster subsizing of all lunches, all adult breakfasts. So the recommendation would be that we increase the cost for next year for breakfast from $3 to $3.60, and then for lunch from $5 to $5.50. You know, we need one of the school community to increase those costs for our adults. While I'm not necessarily saying the big items, but that's a, that's a good supplement. So we'd book, we'd recommend that we make those changes that will take place for next year.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Are the, are 18-year-old students covered?
No, they, so they are adults, but they are, they are still considered students. They're still.
Excellent. Good question.
All student, all student lunches are.
So students trump 18-years-old.
Okay, I move to increase the price of breakfast for adults by 60 cents to $3.60 and to increase the price of lunch for adults by 50 cents to $5.50 beginning in the 2025-2026 school year.
Hi, second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the first reading of policy IKF, graduation requirements.
Yes, so as you know, we need to revise our graduation policy in the latter results of the ballot question for the fall, which eliminated the MCAS as a graduation requirement. The revised policy removes all language related to the MCAS exam and adds language stating how a student can reach or acquire competency determination. And remember, a couple meetings ago, I don't know if it was last year, maybe it was two years ago, you did a presentation about that. What, what does it mean to have competency determination? Because even though the MCAS exam was eliminated as the mechanism for competency determination, the state still requires that every school district certify that every student graduate has minimum proficiency at 10th grade level in math, English, and science. And the way students can reach a competency determination process is by passing two years of English in high school, say, I do. Passing Algebra I and geometry, which are the required subjects for competency in math, and then passing a high school test in science, etc. So then we talked about, we had a large discussion of, there's been a lot of discussion about adding some other requirements or having some other way that would be recommended from the state to meet that competency determination. The governor's actually setting up a council on graduating requirements. So this, who knows, in the years, we might return that this policy and it gets a little different because maybe as a district, we're going to add on, you know, that concept of our portfolio or something like that for our seniors or senior project. Who right now, which we talked about at the previous meeting, also the goal here would be, or my recommendation would be, let's keep this minimum standard. Let's see what happens over the next year or two of these discussions of what the competency determinations are going to look like. If the state puts out guidance saying that we need to adopt, or we as a district decide we need to adopt something different, I think it would make sense to do that. But at this time, I think the, I think the next. But at this time, I think the thing that makes most sense for our current seniors and for the graduating class of FY twenty-six is to just put in this basic language that you have to have a competency determination. So what we've done in this policy is we've eliminated the MCAS language. There's a couple of the red crossouts here. You have something we're still working with MASC on, because they, since they've updated our policy name, there's still some echoes. So the top section is just echoes that we're changing in the policy as represented on the MASC website. And obviously, the major strike here is taking up all this language related to the MCAS exam and adding this language on competency determination. In accordance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, students must have competency determination through completing CAT classwork based on the academic standards and the state curriculum frameworks for 10th grade students, I should say 10th, that's the typo, in pairs of math, science, technology, and English. Students who are unable to attain competency determination prior to their expected graduation date may be eligible for a certificate of attainment. Or to qualify for attainment, the student must have met all the other primary school graduation requirements. That, I kept that language in there. The odds of that happening is so remote, because most of our students, to meet the graduation requirements listed above, the four years of English, three years of history, four semesters of comprehensive health, two semesters of visual arts, four years of math, to meet that standard, they're going to reach their competency determination. I said, you know, the real odd scenario, which I don't even know what's happened, would maybe be in math, where a student hadn't passed algebra one geometry. So we decided, I decided to keep that language up. If for some reason that happened while that student was working towards passing that class to earn the competency determination, but if they've met all their other graduation requirements, if it's still participation graduation, we'd receive a certificate of attainment. And then the goal would be to have them pass whichever, if they passed algebra one geometry, you know, their official performance in competency determination. Like I said, the odds of that happening is, I believe, is really remote, but for right now, I'd say the recommendation is the policy. So this is just the first reading of the policy. We'll bring that in March seventeenth. You know, I do think it's important that we update this policy, because ultimately, we don't want to have a policy that says students have to pass MCAS exam when they no longer do. So I'll take any questions about change in the graduation requirements policy. The policy the subcommittee did meet, and they did recommend to move this forward to the full committee for review. And no, no actually required thanks, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, just the first reading. So anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for that information. We shall see what happens in the future. So that brings us to reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they would like to report? Anyone? Okay, so I, I know, I'm sure everyone's shocked that I have something to say, but I will be brief. I just want to say I was not at the last meeting, so I missed the culinary experience and the performance, but I heard everything was amazing. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that attended our last meeting and to the rest of the committee for moving on without me being here. I was actually in Washington, DC at the National School Board Association Advocacy and Equity Institutes, and I also served on the nominating committee for NSBA for the Eastern region. So it was a great learning experience for me. I did learn some new and upcoming information about AI that I am going to share with Mr. Neef, as well as the rest of the school committee. And I just want to echo what Ron had mentioned about the temperature in Washington, DC. We did go to Capitol Hill and meet with our legislators from across our state, and their focus is maintaining services. Typically, we will advocate for an increase in IDEA and other areas where everyone in education could use more funding. There's never enough funding. But this year, it was really just about thanking them for the work that they're doing and for advocating and just trying to maintain the funding that's being dispersed. So I just want to mention that now more than ever, it's important that all of us do what we can to ensure that public education funding will, at a minimum, remain where it is, because it's important that all districts, I mean, especially Carver's, that we have the funding that we need to make sure that every single student receives the tools that they need to be successful while they're in our district and beyond in graduation. So I just ask people to, please attend town meeting in April, learn more about what's happening in our community, in our district, and just pay attention. And just please advocate and use your voice where you can, because we're all here on behalf of children. And I think that some people lose sight of the fact that that's what we're here for. So I just want to say thank you to all the support that we receive, and we would love to see more people in the seats. We would love to see more people attend our meetings, so you can hear directly from the experts in our district as to what's happening in our schools every day, as well as our student voice. I'm so thankful that we have been able to elevate students in the way that we have over the past few years to recognize their hard work and their accomplishments. So with that, I have a leadership weekend coming up with MASC in February, and in April, I will be going to the National School Board Annual Conference in April, where a current school committee member from Massachusetts is actually going to become president of the National School Board Association. So it is a huge accomplishment. His name's Devin Sheehan. He currently serves in Holyoke, and it's going to be very exciting to see someone from Massachusetts climb that leadership ladder at NSBA. So with that, if someone would like to make, oh, sorry, did you have something to add?
Happy Black Heritage Month.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, this is a, you know, it's a really big thing, and I want to say, just, I just wanted to just say that it's celebrated in our, in our town, it's celebrated in our school district.
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder. Absolutely. So with that, if there's nothing else, if someone would like to make a motion to enter into executive session?
Okay. I move that we adjourn the open session of the February 24th, 2025, school committee meeting, and move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the EAPC and non-union personnel, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares not to return to open session.
I second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second, and since this is a motion to enter into executive session, this will be a roll call vote.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Nene, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Roll column, aye.
Okay, 8:03 PM, the February 24th, 2025, meeting of the Carver School Committee is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.